Yeah. I'll just leave it there.
What are the plans?
This is the transportation. Oh, good. These are maps that I'm returning Javier gave me.
The plan.
Yeah, the plan map.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. Which and then we have on the when I talked to Lincoln for a long time. We we went over the eighty page comprehensive plan. And. Yeah. Oh, my gosh.
You know, you're in the middle of it.
My goodness.
Do I see the big picture? Because I think he's following some. Did you you can see he's following some guidelines that other people.
Oh, yeah.
A little bit of them, not mine.
They had done something that maybe well, they did get the data, though, like they did get the updated.
Oh, good.
Okay. I think to him something.
Do you want to talk a speech in the map?
So what kind of map? Is this this map?
This is this is yeah, so this was southern develop southern development.
Yeah, because they they're proposing these different communities. And that's the one that's up above the park. And I don't even want to say whether it's east or west because I don't know. I'm really honestly.
I think they're east.
We have to give them a different name.
It's north.
When you the it's north.
Yeah.
For this map.
Let's try this again.
Yeah, I think it's. It's over here, Bird Street. This is the development.
So here we go. We're gonna test again, guys. I don't know if it's still work.
And then they.
All righty.
Bye.
Okay, apologies. I I'm connected through University of Virginia VPN now. So maybe that helps.
Good, yeah.
Okay.
So they want I get to try it in here.
Okay.
You want to go ahead?
So um. If I could share my screen eventually, Melody, that'd be great. If you could just give me permission forever for when I'm ready to share my screen, that'd be great.
Yeah.
You leave it to me. Just one bit to me. I should I should give you back. This isn't me. It's yours.
How about we can switch to racing?
Development.
But John, you're a share?
Yeah.
Uh, usually there's a little um. Oh, now I can do it. Okay. Super. Okay. So whenever you're ready, just let me know and I'll.
What'd you say? Flurry or is it so sneeze?
Um. I know. I was gonna say I don't know how to be best for you. I'm using glasses from like two prescriptions ago.
It says.
I've read the. Yes. Pretty complicated. Before some Nancy who's. Nancy confess.
Okay, and you guys.
Okay. Great. Well, um. Nice to see everyone again. So I can explain the transportation plan whenever you're ready. Yeah.
Okay.
You guys ready?
Okay. Awesome. Well, Elizabeth, nice to meet you. Hopefully, I'll meet you sometime in the future in person. Uh, glad to hear about your experience that you're you're likely very familiar with. These V dot requirements, I I hope. I from what I gathered earlier, you used to work for V dot?
Yes, yeah.
Oh, excellent. So when you when I say V dot Regency, you know exactly who that is. So that that's awesome. Um. So basically, um. As we've been putting together the comprehensive plan, we we realized that the comp plan didn't have a transportation plan specifically. And this is one of the requirements from the Code of Virginia. So the transportation plan really sets out the long term uh. Transportation needs of the town. And this is both in written form and also it has to have a map. So I'll just go through. How this document is structured. Um, it's basically structured in three sections. The first section is just briefly explaining. Why we have to do a transportation plan and what's required. The second section is really focusing on recapping our consultation with V dot. We had a while back. Um, and then the third section is really. The transportation plan itself. And this is all supposed to go into the comprehensive plan, and I suggest it goes under the goal. Build out infrastructure because V dot has a lot to do with roads, but also pedestrian networks, sidewalks, trails, so on and so forth. Okay, so um. The transportation plan requirements, this is all gleamed from the Code of Virginia, having to do with concert comprehensive plan requirements. Okay, so I'll. I'll basically um. Just skip over that to our consultation. We first consulted V dot long ago on July thirty first, twenty twenty three. Seems just like yesterday. However, um, this was really a first time that Javier and the town had connected with V dot for a while. And we talked about some safety concerns on Valley Street, especially near the bamboo area, if you might recall. And um. They referred us to um. Potentially reaching out to Thomas Jefferson Planning District Commission for some for some help. However, we did reach out to Thomas Jefferson Planning District Commission, and they said that basically, since the town is not a stakeholder, we're not at the county level. We're not paying into the district commission. Then they cannot provide help to us either. Um. So we are kind of on our own. So that's why I just drafted this document up for us. Uh, the the one very positive thing that I think came out of this V dot consultation was that basically these quarterly meetings were set up. To look at long term issues, including safety issues. But also a monthly meeting was set up to talk about more like maintenance and short term issues. So that was just one important thing I think worth recording, and I put that there in this this paragraph. Okay? So moving on, the actual transportation plan. Uh huh, go ahead. Yes, hi.
Go ahead.
Oh, I hey, I'm sorry. I have a question. You said that they they said that um. They couldn't help out because we didn't have. Like on again, yes, yeah, invested.
Well. Yes, and that was surprising because, you know. Planning District Commissions were set up to provide. Additional capacity to, uh, you know, different jurisdictions in the region. However, they do have to pay their bills. So, uh, and we are the only town within two counties, you know, Fluvana and Albemarle, of course. Um, so we went to them and we were really excited to to maybe get them to help us on our GIS maps or get us to. Get them to help us on other things such as this transportation plan.
Right.
However, they said that they did not have the budget, and since the town does not pay into their. Their coffers, um, they're not able to help us. Yeah.
But we pay into the very deep coffers of Albemarle County.
Correct, as as residents, you're you're paying into the 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 coffers indirectly through through the county, of course, yes. Yeah. So that was surprising and in my opinion, quite disappointing to hear that because um. Out of everyone in the, I believe it's a five county or city jurisdiction, including Charlottesville. Uh, small towns are what need the most help. Um, and. They're obviously not providing that help. Um, and we even talked, I think it was Miss Nancy Gill and I, we went to Panera at um. Um, was it Fifth Street Station? And we we had a a meeting with Donna over some coffee and and bagels. To talk about this issue. Um, Donna was the was the supervisor at the time. Um. But yeah, it's just in terms of me as a a a planner, aspiring PhD student at University of Virginia, I was really disappointed. Yeah. So that's I think that was worth recording, and we put it I put it right here. You know, V dot was not able to provide direct technical assistance. Yeah. Um, and then Thomas Jefferson Planning District Commission also was not. Yeah. Okay, so if if I'll keep going, if that's okay, um. So. Now. Section three is the transportation plan, and what I've done, I've pulled out the exact requirements out of the Code of Virginia, and I've highlighted those in green. Of course, we'll delete these before we send them to V dot. But um, basically, we need to create an inventory what the town currently has. So um, we. I wrote in very brief sections about the pedestrian amenities. Uh. The use of bicycles or their the lack thereof. Um, basically, wrote that, you know, there's a loose network of cycling routes in the region. Uh, predominantly for weekend pleasure riders during the summer months. Um. And there have been many plans by Thomas Jefferson Planning District Commission to increase bike ridership in the region, and nothing is really taken off. We do have public transportation, for instance, Jaunt. I've ridden that a couple of times to Scottsville, and and Javier has shuttled me back to Charlottesville. It's but it's it's only really for those that live and commute, because there's only two trips per day each way. Yeah. Vehicle network that we're probably most familiar with, Route twenty, um. Uh, so on and so forth. Route six. And vehicle parking. So thank you, Jam, and everyone else that helped facilitate the vehicle parking recount. So basically, this is important just to kind of record what the town has. From the comp plan in twenty eighteen, um, the public and private car park lots were counted. So. Uh, for instance, the churches have a lot of parking. However, you can't really count those feasibly as as public parking that you can use every single day. For events such as Fourth of July. So this is this is a map that um. Basically, Jack helped produce, but I had some questions because. If you look here, lot F two, F three, and and V one all had twenty seven. And then F two has twenty seven handicap lots. So that's why I just kind of wanted to double check that before we sent this to V dot. So um, basically, these are the numbers that I I just got from Melody today. So one question I did have, go ahead.
Question. Did you ever talk to um, Jack about? I mean, he's he's been asking a lot about the um. The.
The maps.
Map. And the future zoning map and all of that. Has that been cleared up?
Um, you know, basically, I I've I've. Taken the strategy of putting that on the back burner for for several reasons. Maybe I can. I can connect offline and explain further with Elizabeth.
Okay. That sounds.
Do you mind if I do that? Yeah, yeah.
I just wanted to make sure that somebody was communicating in one some way. Or another, and I'm sure you've tried, and I understand.
Yeah.
We'll we'll talk about that.
Yep. Um. Though once one question I had regarding these car park lots, if you see here behind Victory Hall, two EV charging spots. I thought those were next to the the tavern in the. The the farmer's market lot?
No, they moved them.
Oh, moved them. Oh.
Yeah, they moved it back here to the corner. Of the parking lot.
Okay. That's good to know. Okay, so I'll I'll update the text because we do we try to highlight that about the. Vehicle EV charging, so. Okay. So I'll update that further on. Okay. So continuing on, if I may, um. The next section talks about the transportation network studies. So um. Basically. This is a great place to record all the different documents the town has done in the last twenty years or so. So um, for instance, we had electric vehicle charging station study. Um, transportation priorities list done by Albemarle County, bike and pedestrian path study. So you can see. There's. Thirteen different studies that have been recorded here. Um, the darn roundabout study up at James River Road and Route twenty, I I can't find it right now. I know it exists. I I just don't know the the year, but if anyone knows that, that'd be wonderful. Otherwise, we just go ahead. Um, and I do know that there was a traffic study performed by the development group proposing the. Uh. Tire factory change of use. So I just mentioned that here. Yeah. So anyway, this is a great place to record all those studies and put them in one place so that everyone knows about them. Okay, moving on, the next section has to do with assumptions. So again, this this green area is required from the Code of Virginia. Okay, so we have to mention our population growth, so on and so forth. Yeah. So um. You know, in the comprehensive plan, we've already talked about the profile of the town in terms of population. And you might remember that these are the population projections that we foresee in the next twenty five years. Okay? So that's what we we decided on. So um. Then this generally talks about upcoming development like Tiger Fuel and Tiger Wash. But also Bird Street is currently under construction. And then potential development in East Village, Mink Creek Estates, so on and so forth. Yeah. So that's talking about the potential development and the potential need for additional road networks, capacity, so on and so forth. Okay, the next section is required to talk about needs assessment. Okay, so what are the specific deficiencies? So this is where I decided to write a little bit more. So talking about pedestrians, we've really focused a lot of our community engagement on build out infrastructure. And create community connections. Okay? So sidewalk improvements include gaps in the sidewalk network, for instance, West Downtown. Um, and also connecting in the what's what's called the Fluvana County portion of town. Uh, or you know, that I guess it's East River some people refer to. Um, and then also recording that, you know, a lot of people think connecting through Van Cleve Nature Area is really important for expanding the trail network to the potential new developments in the northeast part of town, of course. Okay? Uh, in terms of bicycles, yes, there's potential, but nothing is really taken off. Go.
Lincoln, is there any mention in there about? The desire for a connection between uptown and downtown?
Uh, yes, yes, I'll I'll get to that. We even have a map showing that. Yeah. Um. So. Basically, um. This paragraph on cyclists says that, you know, the number of cyclists remains moderate and typically. Cyclists only frequent the roads during the warmer months, so on and so forth. So we're not really placing a lot of emphasis on biking. Um. In terms of vehicles, you know, we talk about the potential of growth. I I will fix this about the electric vehicle charging. I'll move that to um. Victory Hall Lot. Okay? In terms of road infrastructure, um. You know, we talked about intersections. So Miss Nancy Gill did a um. A poll through the James Exchange, you might remember, talking about the different intersections that have issues in town. Okay, so there the top one was Bird and Valley. Um, and then James River and Valley. So then I I basically list down the 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 issues with these intersections. So. Whether it be Route twenty and James River Road, the the rise in the road. Uh, the new construction of Tiger Fuel, um. So on and so forth. Um. Valley and Hardware Street, the the unique geometry of the intersection. So on and so forth. Um. So then the next section we record, you know, what? Has the town really done? What are the initiatives we've tried? Okay, so there there have been some um. Some big studies. And initiatives, for instance. Two thousand three to two thousand four was Thomas Jefferson Planning District Commission. Uh, they did a lot of community engagement. So this is. Kind of what I summarized in bullet point form, and the reason I did that is because a lot of it's still the same, the same issues twenty or more years later.
The two thousand, just a quick comment, Lincoln, on Elizabeth was asking, Elizabeth, something I will say when. When I was really active in the Van Cleve Nature Area, which I'm not at the moment, but. That was really instructive. Some of the stuff from that twenty two thousand three study, which is before my time, but here, but it very, very helpful stuff that's in that study.
Yeah, because. If they helped then. Uh huh, right.
We.
But now.
They helped with a study, like, yeah, they didn't they didn't fund.
And didn't we pay for that study?
We had also been working with them. I believe had used some funds for other things. So like they helped with our smaller area plan. That kind of stuff. So we were a little bit. We did have, you know, a little, not much, but we had some money in the game. Yeah, but it wasn't like big sacks of money.
But sorry.
Oh, yeah, that's a good question. So my understanding of this two thousand three to two thousand four study. Was that the planning district commission went out and got a grant, and that grant paid for this this study, this assistance. Um, so it didn't come out of their pocket. But I I think it's wonderful that that this is recorded here, because, you know, that study is just a PDF lying on one of the old clerk computers. So it's important that we 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 keep that in memory. Yeah. Okay, um. So. Continuing on, okay. Intersection safety at Route two six, uh, two, seven, two, six, James River Road and Route twenty. So this is a really important study because this is a formal traffic impact assessment done by V dot. And it lists all the the accidents that happened at this intersection, including the fatality. Um, and this is one of those catalyst reports that can help to improve the infrastructure of the the intersection. Of course, nothing has happened since twenty twelve. But it's still on the radar of the county as a problem intersection. Okay, so then the Timman Sidewalk Study for Routes six and twenty. Um, so. This is is really. One of those studies that really looked at, you know. Connecting up. Up uh, da uptown and downtown. Um. So I've included all the different pieces of that that study, everything from the. Project budget, the drawing sheets, the site photos, so on and so forth, so we don't lose track of those. And I've got them saved into our our shared folder on OneDrive. Um, there's also another alternative sidewalk project. This was um. Another one, um. And thi- this was connecting Scottsville School Apartments and Doryer Park. And then the more recent one was the gap, um. Uh, technical assistance grant that we applied for. However, OPI. Basically said that we were missing letter of support from the county. But later, when we met with the county of Albemarle, they said that everything was in accordance, and they they submitted it for us. Um, so that that those stories don't all line up, let's just say. So anyway, we didn't get that grant. I did prepare a a draft, an improved version of that draft for twenty twenty four. But I think Javier was a little bit hesitant to submit that and not be able to implement it. So that 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 was never submitted. Okay, so um. Then the. Next section is the recommendations. So um. The thing I highlight in yellow is really the the requirement that the plan has to include a map. Okay? So I'll just kind of cut to the chase. The the recommendations here are are two of them. Number one is prioritize the development improvement of sidewalks and trails. And um. It talks about how the the town could connect uptown, downtown, so on and so forth. And also from the the tire factory. Across to the East River or Fluvana side of the town. And also with trails through the Van Cleve Nature Preserve area. Okay? The the second item is improving road intersections. So we can talk more about which go go ahead.
So sorry to interrupt.
Yeah.
You were saying from the tire plant over to the Fluvana side? Where?
Yeah, so maybe I'll just show this. I'll just show this map, make it graphically easier. Um, and yeah, give me feedback on this map, please. But basically. This map, um. It has a legend. Let me just zoom out so you can see the legend. But I wanted to put sidewalks and trails first and then intersections after that. Because we really want to prioritize walking rather than driving, of course. Um, but making connections both uptown to midtown to downtown, those are the blue arrows. But also there was a lot of talk about how to create pedestrian connections into Fluvana. Because after you get a little bit past Main Street, the sidewalks stop. And also, how can we connect the? Tire factory or any future development there better with with downtown? Through near the library and those failed sidewalk projects. Sorry, go ahead.
So the blue arrows are going up twenty?
Uh, well, I think this is meant to be be diagrammatic. So um.
Okay.
Know Dan knows a lot of history about the different potential routes, for instance. Um. I can make it even more diagrammatic. Um. But.
No, that's fine.
It's always been a challenge, right?
Yeah. I was really thinking that you had come up with some route that would take you from the. The factory to. Fluvana. And. I wasn't sure how you were gonna do that, but I see you're suggestive of certain ways to make that happen.
Yeah, um. Because I I think from my. My experience walking around town, driving around town, that that small road right next to the used car dealership. It's it's almost like a a little creek. Um, I think that has a lot of potential, but anyway.
Are you talking about the the road that goes up to James River Road?
Yeah, and then then connecting over. I think that has a lot of potential, even, you know, there's not even a lot of houses on that road.
Actually, Lincoln, the truth be told, I don't know if we should. Break this here, but. The route that Santa Claus uses each year, which has kind of been hidden for many years. So I don't know if it would be allowed. But but. Uh, but we could do that later. I'm I'm. Joking, but the thing that we did talk about, and it has been talked about before, is. Using. Mountain Vista and then making a connection that either comes on one side of twenty or another side of twenty and. Whether it's through the old bamboo or whether it's through downward the. Um. Connecting over towards Confederate, there are ways to go. So I think it's good to have your. Directional idea there, so to speak. And we've, under Josh's leadership, some years ago, we. We proved the sidewalk idea was not something at least.
Yeah.
And so he's saying instead of his front yard, he wants it going through my front yard. So that's fair. I mean.
No, it's we take both of our front yards.
Yeah.
Okay.
But I I think the intention of this diagram is just to be diagrammatic and keep the ideas flowing until. Uh, something sticks or funding comes. Yeah. Okay, so the next question is regarding the intersections. So from my gathering, the Route twenty and James River Road is. Probably. The the most important intersection that might need improvements. Uh, because. A, we have the new Tiger Fuel. B, there's a rise in the road, and it it really hinders visibility. V dot did cut down the tree, I believe it's in Nancy's yard, to allow the school bus to turn. But other than that, you know, there's going to be a lot of potential housing built in the northeast with the East Village, so on and so forth. So there'll be a lot of people flowing down James River Road.
Yeah, how do we get ahead of that? How do we get ahead of that? I just feel like, you know, we've been talking about the roundabout, and we've been talking about. That traffic situation. I mean, is that something you can just like grade through it, repave it, and then you're?
Well, my my suggestion, um. It's. My suggestion right here is to focus. On applying for the gap grant because. That's how V dot provides technical assistance money to municipalities. And with that money, I believe it's a hundred thousand dollars, you can do at least an initial study and maybe some engineering plans. So the most important thing is you have a shovel ready plan. So once you have a shovel ready plan, then you can go out and get the money, or. Or you have the the shovel ready plan sitting on the desk at Town Hall, and a potential developer sees it, and then. And a potential developer sees it and then um maybe chooses on their own prerogative to proffer. That's another option. You get my flow?
I'm picking up what you're putting down. Yes. What what is the problem? What are you saying that a developer would pay for the road improvements?
Yeah, so so basically um. In Virginia, you know, a municipality municipality cannot uh negotiate with a a developer. Um, and give an offer to give them certain uh development rights in exchange for uh uh goodies. But um you can, any municipality can make known their 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 wants in a comprehensive plan. And a developer could open up the comprehensive plan and and see the the menu of things that the town needs. And the developer could, under their own prerogative, choose to proffer or offer um. To uh implement certain infrastructure for the town. Yeah, in exchange, you know, for for development rights, but the town cannot offer that. That that would be, that's illegal.
It's inappropriate, okay?
So um, that that would be my recommendation to apply to to uh V dot for um. The gap grant or uh there's a few others that they have. And they're they're available every one or two years on a s- a certain cycle through. Uh, and it sometimes it's not V dot, sometimes it's uh O P. O I P I, um Office of Infrastructure, uh Public uh Planning or something, yeah. Okay, so um the 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 last section is is basically also required. And it's a summary of ma- major changes made to the comprehensive plan and the transportation plan or the transportation plan. So this is pretty easy because we haven't had a transportation plan before. But basically, um, the the changes that we made, you know, our our previous population target was one thousand. And now we're revising that to eight hundred. Okay, and nine hundred people by twenty fifty. Okay? Uh, we are designated a community community planning area, that's the in- intent and um. Just to refresh your your memory, that's an urban development area, U D A um. So that's another way to channel funds to a potential intersection i- indicating a U D A um urban development area. And we rephrased it uh community planning area and that's allowed. Um, and uh, yeah, we have the first transportation plan and the first uh capital improvement program was created uh through our process. So we've had a lot of firsts uh with this comprehensive plan. Um, so the the next step uh is is the most important and I. I just wanna highlight that uh you might have heard in Charlottesville that their development uh code was was uh uh negated or kicked out. Um, and that was because uh there was a lawsuit filed for for several reasons. And one of those reasons was. That they've they did not properly consult V dot with their transportation plan. Um, so that's why I suggest that we um we touch up this document with the parking numbers and uh, you know, electric vehicle. Uh, charging location and then we submit this to V dot for their comment. I do not anticipate there being a lot of comments. But what happened with Charlottesville is um, yeah, they got hung up on consultation with V dot. They never did that uh in the proper sequence. And then uh their lawyer that they uh hired externally forgot to file a document at a certain time. So they the 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 whole development town uh code for the the uh city was thrown out on that technicality. Um, so then, once we get the comments from V dot, i- if we get any, um, hopefully it's just a no objection. Thanks, thanks for. Sending this to us. Um, then we have to put um, we have to give them a copy of the comprehensive plan. Yeah. Okay.
Can I interject something here? I was just gonna say. Um, to you, Elizabeth, that um keeping track. Of deadlines and things like that for grants has been kind of a big stumbling block for us. And so I think, I I don't know whether you just apply for grants and then get them and, you know. Don't accept them or if you just make sure that you're wanting this one grant. I I just felt like we missed a lot of opportunity to at least get experience with submitting grants. And we just haven't done as much as we could have done. So, anyway. I'm not giving you a directive, that's not my job, but I wanted to just mention it, that there have been some. It would be great to kind of have that um be there.
Yeah, I would um like to have a a running Excel spreadsheet that shows. The brands, what they're for, the deadlines, the submit, the documents, if there's follow up, if they mean the dates and then. Um, this um, Melody, I've been working on. One of the grants that was, I think, sort of lost somewhere.
Right.
But.
I think it's really exciting in a way. I have to say that. I'd have to say that that if your experience with that and what you can bring into that process is really exciting. Um, and I think we can get some grants and do some good.
Yeah, I'm I'm really um excited and anticipating that.
Oh, good.
In fact, that one grant that Melody uh brought to my attention. I took it home and I was reading through it. I'm like, oh, that's just my old manager. He's high up there, so I was like, I might have to, you know.
That's great.
It's too late.
Right.
Um, I think we're in some of the grants, so uh usually the springtime is when they start awarding the grants. Um, but you know, the possibility exists that that maybe other towns did, could got grants and they haven't acted on it. Then the money goes back into a pot.
Right, right.
Um, hopefully, we'll uncover, I'll be able to uncover some of them.
Yeah, that's fantastic. Okay, thank you, Lincoln, so much.
Sure, I'll just mention that um, yeah, a lot of small municipalities, of course, have uh the most trouble uh once they get the grant. Implementing the grant, right? Cause that takes a lot of time. Um, so um, I think the best, one of the best ideas that came out of the comp plan was to recommend uh potentially hiring a part-time grant. Uh, writer. Um, I I do think that uh any investment in a a grant writer might pay off. Uh, twofold or threefold in terms of money. Um, but that that was just a a a good suggestion that I I didn't think of when when we were talking as a as a team here uh. Creating ideas for the com- comprehensive plan. Um, okay, so so uh I gotta run to work actually in a few minutes. So um, let me, let me just uh summarize our our next steps. So uh what I want to do um. In the in the next uh week uh or ten days, depending on your availability, Elizabeth, I'd like to have a a phone call with you and just kind of. Um, discuss with you more details or whatever you wanna know. Um, and then I know Molly, you reached out to me. Uh, you wanna have a session?
Yeah. Cause I I'm. Okay, but you got what I was saying. And I fully wanted to run some of it past you. I have a hard time with the. Well, anyway, I'll talk to you about it when we come.
Okay, so um, here's my plan. Um, in, I think in about. Two days, I'll be able to send the the finalized transportation plan uh back to um. The town. And I don't know if, Elizabeth, you would like to email it to the the Regency um in Charlottesville. Um, and I don't know if you've made contact with those folks yet or you know them already, maybe. Um, but Javier was doing monthly meetings with them about road maintenance together with the county.
Okay.
Yep. And I I think the 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 best outcome of consulting V dot would be a no no objection. Or even better, here's some grants that you should apply for. Yeah. Um, so that's that's the immediate task. So uh I anticipate, you know, V dot, it could, they could come back to us very fast. Or maybe it takes about a month, who knows? Um, so once we get that feedback, then we just uh take that. Transportation plan, which um, once I condense it down, it'll be about. Seven or eight pages. Um, and we just put it in the comprehensive plan. Um, so the the section we really need to focus on, um Molly and I uh and I is is the. That that last intersection. And I've got a little bit of touch up to do on Lisa's section. Lisa's, Lisa handed her section over to me to finish up. Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
And then, once uh, once we have those section, those those two uh areas done, then. Then we can kind of finalize that and then hand it over to to uh Casey to to help us proofread and edit uh. Look for any discrepancies with with her fresh eyes. Yeah. Any questions that arise?
We need some photos, right? Too, we need.
Oh, yeah.
So Molly's Molly's got the got those, uh, I think.
Go. I figured if, when I put them in there, I'm gonna have to do some editing and I'm working on your cover page, cause I wanted to. Surprise you, but.
Okay, great. Well, let's, let's uh schedule something, Molly, um.
Okay.
Um, on the next Monday, if possible, yeah.
Okay.
Or Tuesday, yeah, Monday or Tuesday, yeah. Okay. Um, so yeah, we're we're making progress. I just wanna reassure everyone. Uh, I think the transportation plan is a a big step forward. And I think it's quite a a a good bit of text, um, high. High quality text, in my opinion, uh that will really help the the comprehensive plan. Yeah. And that can also be referenced for grant writing. So uh, I mean, the the whole purpose of a comprehensive plan is to reference it. These are our intentions. And this grant that we're applying for uh is in alignment with that and will help us achieve those intentions. So.
Before we can give a copy to the council.
Um, well.
Because I think I'm more.
Yeah, I I I still ha- as usual, hesitant to 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 say a date. I know Dan. Dan is staring me down because he has to report to the council.
He should be staring me down.
Yeah. But I I think.
For the zoning administrator as well, because if decisions are made, I may pay reference back to you. Uh, the comprehensive plan also.
So right now, the the twenty eighteen uh comprehensive plan is still the uh live in effect document. And um, then this one will hopefully be approved um once um. Once we have, we go go through all the steps, of course, yeah.
Lincoln, just so I personally say this, you're doing an amazing job and I think. We've been really, really uh just well-served by all that you do. And I hope you have a good class, where where our work today, whatever you're off to.
Yeah, I'm working at an art teacher firm in Singapore this summer. Um, so um, yeah, I will uh see you all later. Thank you so much for your time.
Have a great day.
Thank you, bye.
I was only gonna say that it it looks pretty polished to me. I mean, yeah, it's.
Well, he he is definitely in that headspace too. I found, you know, I found it really difficult to get in there and be talking about it like it was a. A research document instead of, I think, we should do this, you know? It's like, no, that's not the voice you need, right? So, it's been a challenge. I I'm done with the text now, but. I gotta get those pictures put in to and reconfigure it. So I'm talking to them about doing that.
That's great. And it sounds like you'll be talking to them about them, the map.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um. And the grants that need. So, yeah, yeah, I was thinking lots of news. I was just gonna ask, the roundabout study that was done for River Road and Route twenty, so you couldn't find any information on that? Would, was that, do you know that was already submitted to V dot?
So I mean, that was two thousand and four and that would be before.
So that was before Tiger Fuel was even.
Yeah, were you uh, you were?
Before mine.
Yeah, um.
So I guess I could ask V dot.
Yeah, um, I mean, maybe Ron, Ron might have an idea. I don't know.
There was more of a conversation. Na- Nancy probably would be a good resource to check the points.
Who's gonna check with Nancy?
We we could hopefully.
At her chair, right?
Yeah.
Oh, she has to come up with that before you submit her name. I know. No, there are some things I need. And actually, we could probably say, and there's some maps we need. She's got, she's got quite a collection.
Well, I know, but she gave me this one, which is, you know, the the. Yeah. But yeah. Yeah, that, yeah. But she knows that if you do this, is going to see if they can't superimpose that on this.
Oh, wow. Yeah. Do you want this to be a zoning?
On, yeah, yeah.
And she produced this, and where did this come from?
Somebody. No, yeah, this is it, Jack Matt. But this is. Oh, that, this is a somebody who does this that she can see.
I wonder if it's Fred.
Is it?
Is it like a a satellite?
Arc T I S or that uh Albemarle County G I.
Yeah, yeah. Uh, it's not a hundred percent accurate, I guess, but definitely a good reference.
Yeah. Yeah, that's like.
Everyone did miss my map that used to be on the floor, the best zoom afar. Constantly pull it out and see where it was going.
Yeah, it's always good to have a paper map as a backup.
Don't have one. Not anymore. I have a GPS.
Uh, if you're going away to Richmond, stop by the uh, just the visiting someone.
No, I I I'm sure I have them, you know, but for the most part, I just don't use them anymore. All right, so um, where are we? And does anyone have anything else they wanna discuss?
I recall that somebody wanted to talk about skies on the dark.
That's me. You're right. I wanted to talk about dark skies.
Oh.
And, well, we've been talking a lot about it. We've kind of made a connection with the people here that. That do, well, I'm not exactly sure what they do, but they they educate people about dark skies. Um, it was really fascinating because I I found out more information when I was doing a uh workshop with SCAN. Where they were making bird boxes and they talked about how the birds would. You know, um, they would migrate and then they would just run into buildings. Cause that was not their directional focus or something. I'm not exactly sure what it was, but.
Lights throw them off.
Something along those lines, but the lights did cause a problem with their migration and. It it caused a lot of problems with the the bluebirds, you know, trying to up their population and. We all made bird boxes, which I thought was a brilliant kind of thing to be involved in.
You have a choice of the lights. You know, like the street lights when you have a luminaire that goes up like that.
Yeah.
And it's really.
That's not.
Down that too, it really needs to, you know.
Direct it down, yeah. We've got a couple of places in town that have really. Put their bright, bright LEDs out there. And um, I would just like to know, do, you know. Could we create a committee who would contact these people and say, you know, whatever our limits might be around that? But I wanted to get a um, an update. There was a development recently with the. Or anybody else know what I'm talking about?
Um, don't.
We we had a day, I mean, they did, they did a day where we remember international dark skies. That was one of their initiatives that we did, which was something we affirmed us.
I know, and it was. It was us, we were talking about um aligning with SCAN. To come up with a Stargaze event where we would talk about dark skies. And um, that got left behind with Javier. So I asked him, you know, who is involved in this? And he said, well, he put something out there and the only people who wrote back were the dark skies people. So. They're definitely in. So they're definitely in it. I'm sure we can get Scan on board with helping us put together an event where we do some stargazing. And I thought that was excellent, because you might be able to see the difference. Or at least the, the potential of that being clouded by the bright lights. But anyway, how do you gauge that? How do you, you know, look to see, well, these people have their lights on?
There, I mean, you can tell by the, um, the lumens that the lights produce.
Right.
Because there's this whole thing in landscape architecture that, uh, well, now LEDs were not first. But it was talking about how bright lights were and how really super bright lights weren't, you know, the option, but, you know, like something like this is your opportunity also to say no to, you know, if they end up putting in streetlights or whatever, that you make sure that you want light luminators that, you know, shine down and that you, um, I mean, I guess the dark skies organization could provide what their recommendations are for lighting.
Well, and I do, um, seem to remember, and please correct me if I'm wrong, that dark skies also could be a designation for us as a city is. And so that way, it enhances what we can put out there as, as our accomplishments or our our concerns or whatever. So I wanted to see about going forward with that. I don't, I don't know who I would talk to to do that. I mean, I can do that as a citizen.
Well, now you do it as, with the authority as chairman. You gotta get used to that.
Come back and talk to the planning.
I think that's a good idea. That's what I'll do. So, and if you need me to, I can update you on that.
Yeah, I mean, I've been interested in saying that, but like, he was talking about proffers earlier. I know in Roanoke County, some of the developments that, you know, the developers would come, and I was just a nosy citizen. Come and be like, but wait, you know, because, oh, gosh, anyway. One time that I was on the planning commission, because I've come and I have, you know, the laws and the regulations and everything. But I would ask the proffers too and say, well, you're gonna, you know, put this building right next door to this residential area, why don't you ask them to provide evergreen screening? Or they have a particular setback.
Well, it's probably worked on in the planning mission with Tiger Fuel. Um, there was a whole committee that worked on the trees. Um, but then also, we talked to them about their bright lights being right there in the residence, right across from the residential section of uptown.
I mean, there's ways also, they have lights that have, that are shielded. That would throw, you know, if you wanna throw a light on the parking lot and then it's shielded on this side, it's not going into the residential. But I know, um, I remember a development that I worked on at V C U, actually. It was, um, crime prevention through, uh, environmental design. And they talked about lighting, and people are developers into one, but a really tall, I think of a shopping. You know, mall.
Right.
And they put the brightest lights and the highest, because they wanna cast all this light. But when you're actually walking in that, when the light is like that, it creates a shadow. I see somebody, you know, I'm gonna be like, you know, out of the way, because it's, I don't see their face. Whereas if you specify lights that aren't as tall and you don't try to throw so much light that as I'm walking along, I see your face and it doesn't, you know, concern me or whatever, but. It's, it's, it's all sorts of stuff like that, limiting that tree so you don't have, um, opportunities for people to lurk or to hide. I mean, this was in Richmond, so.
Yeah.
But here, I don't, I don't know so much, but, um.
Yeah, well, I think it's something to kind of develop our knowledge about how we can do that and also, you know, enforce that. And I have, I have no concept of how to do that, so maybe they can give us more information. But how do you go to your businesses and say, you're, you're kind of going over the limit? We don't even have the ordinance of this.
Well, that was when that started.
Well, sure.
Special lights, or they kind of like just, they're like shades, or like.
I'm sorry.
What, the, the lights that they cast down, are they special lights or are they like, they may have like that. Around them.
Well, a lot of times, it's just the, the cap or the top.
The streetlight, yeah, if you get a moment, just peek up.
So it's the actual light.
Yeah.
The light bulb or the.
You know, like that is streetlight on, on veteran's street. It burned out, so I just never slightly think about it.
Yeah.
Because it's, you know, it's like that orangey.
What they call sodium haline? Yeah.
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 Yeah, it's kind of low hum to it, but I feel like if I say something, they'll replace it, so I'm just letting go.
And it could always be worse.
Yeah, everyone rushes to LED because they're supposed to be less expensive and. But sometimes, you know, mine still burn out. What? Like, who's really gonna take a light bulb back and say? Don't go to Lowe's, I can tell you that. They don't take anything back anymore.
Oh, really?
Uh, yes, I've stopped going to Lowe's in Roanoke.
Okay, where can I go to get a cheap lawn mower?
Baseball marketplace.
Yeah, the marketplace, yeah.
Make them crank it in front of you.
Yeah. No, I hear you.
A push mower?
No. Really? You do?
Yeah. I think that would be pretty cool.
Really?
Yeah.
Oh, my God, you wouldn't believe my lawn.
And, and sheep, you know, yeah.
Oh, yeah, sheep?
Yes.
Really?
Yeah.
Were conversating during a meeting, and I'm wondering, yeah, but we discussed that. It might be kind of a rubbish.
So I'd move to close the meeting.
Second.
What do you say? What, what the motions do? You're all for it, okay?
All right.
Thank you.